Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just, this is the only one. Well, I, I was on the downtown, I mean, I've been on some of the committees for like the projects, yeah. So the downtown and the riverfront development. And then I also, for, for a number of years, I was on the, storefront improvement. Or it's not really a board, but you know, like you, you look at the applications and kind of recommend whether or not you want to, how much money you would give them or whatever. Yeah, they're, they're still doing it, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, yeah. I, I was the recipient of it a few times for, for some of my buildings. And so there were, um, and then at one point, my friend and I were trying to get, um, people to, like, we wanted to consult with people.
Yeah.
But wanted to do it so that, you know, so like encourage them, but also just sort of like direct a little bit for like, because I don't know, a lot of the applications are just like, they're, they're just going to paint it. You know, it's like, it's beautification, but there's no like guidelines. So it's like a lot of things you're like, second one qualifies, but it does not, it's not going to make it like better stuff. Anyway, so I, anyway, I resigned from that at that point, just because I was like, that's a conflict of interest. But then, she has a full-time job and I have my work and stuff. I just like never really did anything with it. So I could prob, I could probably go back to doing that one again. I wouldn't mind. It basically, you just only meet when there's applications.
Every time, every time I hear that advert type of thing, I'm like, okay, that one, it's that well.
Yes, I know, exactly. Yeah. It is a cool program. Hi. No, no. Not going, I'm not going far. Yeah. No, I'm not. I'm probably the first one to leave the, not go on the, not really. But there have been a lot of people on here that have moved on. Yes, it's a good place to be. Are we, we're waiting on dance? All right. I would like to call the September 3rd, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to apply of the United States of America and to the Republic where we just have one nation under God indivisible with all to be having us strong.
Thank you. Would you please call the rule?
Commissioner Strasba?
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Smith-Wickelley?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Murray? Commissioner Badla?
Here.
All right, you have a quorum.
Thanks. Um, all right, I'm gonna approve the agenda. I may have a motion to approve.
I move to approve the agenda.
Thanks. Uh, any second? I got a second.
Second.
All right. Are there any changes to the agenda? Any objections to approving? All right, hearing none, the agenda is approved. And then moving on to our minutes from last meeting, August 6th, may I have a, a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Any objections to, um, any changes, sorry, any changes to the minutes? Any objections to approving? All right, hearing none, uh, the minutes from our last meeting are approved. Uh, moving on to public hearings, resolution PZ 2025 dash 012 recommending amendment of the Saldana Municipal Code, section seventeen point ten point three six five, animals to allow the keeping of chicken hens in all residential zoning districts under certain conditions. May I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve resolution PZ two zero two five dash zero twelve.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All right, thanks. Um, may we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Badla and Commissioners and members of the public. So this resolution is, seeking to amend the animals codes to allow chicken hens currently under the existing code. And Beth is pulling up the, the presentation. And I want to remind you that this resolution is being couns, sponsored by Councilmember Chelsin and Nelson. And this would allow keeping of chicken hens up to six. Currently, if you wanted to have, any farm animals within the city itself, um, in the residential district, you need a greater than 1.5 acres. So if you really look at the spread of, um, and this is the current code as it's verbatim, and, it's not really spread out in the zoning districts. So here's a map of it, and it's in the packet as well. So these are highlighting residential lots that are greater than 1.5 acres. So you can see in the blue is your multifamily parcels. And then in your purple is your single family, two-family, and the remaining is your rural residential parcels. So they're mainly distributing their rural residential, which is really on the east side of Kenai Spur and north of the Kenai River. And then when you talk about the area of the core of these smaller residential districts, it's not, you only have about nineteen lots, and most of these are vacant. So with this new code amendment, it would require that you have an established principal use, which is required in a residential to have a house before you can have, um, chicken hens in your property. And so, my clicker is not working as part of the, any chicken ordinance or any ordinance in general, when it comes to animals, you know, we wanted to find what it is. So it's very clear and specific that only chicken hens are being, would be allowed, not roosters. And what chicken coops means and what enclosure means to really be clear when it comes to the development standards. And so, this is the proposed amendment, going line by line item. So everything in bold and underlined would be the new language. So, everything in terms of if you have greater than 1.5, you may continue to have farm animals on your property. However, if you're less than that, you can have potential chicken hens, subject to meeting all the standards in subsection C. So what's the intent of it? To establish regulations for the keeping of a limited number of chicken hens, in all residential zoning district, promoting responsible animal husbandry during mitigating potential negative impacts on surrounding properties in the community. So this is kind of the crux of, am I allowed to do this? Well, it depends. General standard says it's an accessory use, so you will have to establish, a single-family dwelling or residential before you can have chicken hens as an accessory. Roosters are strictly prohibited. Mass, maximum number of chicken hens is permitted per residential lot. I want to be very clear on that. So if you have a really large lot at the end of day, and there's multiple units, at the end, the lot itself is only allowed to have six chicken hens. And then setbacks, which are important because we want that buffer. So chicken coops and enclosure must be located a minimum of ten feet, from any property line, and furthermore, must be located a minimum of twenty-five feet from any dwelling on the adjacent lot. And lastly, they must be located on the side of rear yards. So nothing in the front. And this is typically what you see in code when it comes to backyard chickens. This is very similar in evaluating what Palmer, Wasilla, Anchorage, Fairbanks does, as well as Kenai. These are the typical standards that we see when it comes to setbacks. And of course, these parameters could be changed. And lastly, the outdoor slaughtering of chickens is prohibited. Always, when I want it to work, it doesn't work. Next slide, please. And these are standards when it comes to coop and enclosure. What does that look like? So it's like a, a controversial thing of, do we have enough language to enforce? So a coop, must be provided for housing of all chickens. The coop must be designed and constructed to predator-resistant, well-ventilated and easily clean, maintained in a clean and sanitary conditions, and impervious to moisture and structurally sound. And furthermore, I do want to point out that we do have animal control standards as well, um, to enforce these regulations. And then furthermore, enclosures must be provided for chickens connected to the coop. Closure must be securely fenced or otherwise contained, to prevent the chickens from escaping and to protect them from predators. And enclosure must be maintained in a clean and sanitary condition. And lastly, with any standards, we have our violation code. If they violate this, then we can issue minor offense citation. Other than that, that concludes, um, the code amendment. And do you want to give an opportunity if, um, Councilmember Chelsin wants to speak on behalf of this, since this is, um, being sponsored by him?
All right. So before we open the public comment period, do you want to, speak to your resolution?
Thank you. Uh, Director Mitchell pretty much covered, uh, the entirety of it. I don't really have any, uh, more to add. Other than just say, it is on. I guess I'd speak a little bit, go a little bit closer. So, um, Director Mitchell, I believe, adequately covered the, uh, majority of what this amendment would be doing to our code. Um, I could just give a little bit of background on that. We had, um, a number of residents of our community come out to our city council a couple of months back, and we, received a, a good amount of interest in this. That's, you know, hence the reason we're seeing this ordinance come before you today. I know when you consider the possibility of allowing chickens into urban residential districts, you know, there's always a lot of concern that could come forward with, you know, that potentially not being done right. And that's why we have to ca, consider this carefully and make sure we are doing it in a manner that is, going to be compatible with the way we, uh, have our zoning districts set up there. Um, so in the crafting this ordinance, I, I think that we did a really effective job of trying to strike a balance. And again, this isn't, you know, basically releasing the floodgates of raising mass farm animals in residential districts. This is something that would be tightly controlled. We're looking at restrictions of six hens, no roosters. We have setback requirements. Uh, we have the ability to enforce these regulations with our animal control. So I, I really do think that this, presents a good balance to allow the keeping of the animals. Again, this isn't something new. As Director Mitchell mentioned, this is something a lot of municipalities across Alaska are already doing, uh, with urban farming, you know, to support sustainability, to support education. Um, there, there's just so many benefits that go with this, you know, and, you know, the, the old adage goes, you don't necessarily know that something is broken until you experience it yourself. Um, this is something I was not actually aware was prohibited in the city. I knew that we allowed chickens. I just wasn't aware that it was restricted to our rural residential districts only. And I myself actually have interest in raising a couple of hens with my toddler here, maybe in the next year or two. So I'm, personally pretty excited about this, and I'd love to see support for it. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, excuse me, answer those.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm happy to see this before us. Um, I'm just curious, is six the magic number that all other municipalities around the state have laid it on? Why is it our magic number?
Uh, I believe six is the more common one. I, I think there are some that might allow up to twelve. Uh, I believe Director Mitchell might, would you be able to speak to that more accurately? But I, I feel like six was the more common one that we saw among other municipalities.
Yes, um, thank you for that question, Chair Badla. So s, six is a common minimum, and other cities does it by lot size. As you increase in lot size, you can have more. You know, I, I was there to assist City of Kenai when they did that. The issue that I came across a lot is most people don't know their lot size. And then to have them calculate this, it's really hard to enforce because the question is like, well, what's your lot size? Okay, the formula is this, how many can you have? It gets really complicated having just a standardized number. It makes it easier for staff and for residents to know because people just sometimes assume, oh, I think I have an acre, or I think I have this. And then they have more than they have to come out, and we have to come out and say, hey, you have to get rid of two or six, depending on your lot size. There's different algorithm. I think Anchorage is the same as based on lot size. You know, you have a minimum, and then you can gradually increase depending on your lot size.
I think one example we looked at when considering the number of chickens to permit was, uh, a model of like, I think up to six with lots, uh, ten thousand square feet or less, and then maybe twelve with twenty thousand square feet. There, there's a couple of different ways you go with it. I, I'm not opposed to maybe considering future amendments to this and increasing those numbers to support more than six on larger lots, maybe down the road. But I think given the fact that this is something new for our city, you know, w, we, we don't have to rush this. Let's kind of ease into it. Let's start and see how six goes with, you know, it's easy to know. You don't have to have different formulas for different sized lots. So my recommendation that I'm presenting here tonight and collaboration with Councilman Nelson, would be to establish six as the baseline and given feedback from the community and how this is administered in the city, we could maybe consider amending this in the future, but let's start with six.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, are there any additional questions I could answer?
Yes, uh, through the chair. Uh, I'm glad to see this, uh, before us. So, yeah, it sounds like, uh, you know, there was a bit of community support within the single-family, multifamily, for adopting this, right? Uh, one question I have is with the setbacks, um, for the chicken coops. So ten feet away from any property line, except for the, front property line, is there, uh, do you see any disadvantages within, the two fam, single-family, two-family and multifamily of having chicken coops on the sides versus just kind of restricting it to the backyard, so to speak?
No, I, the only, the only setback requirement I could see potentially being an issue is, you know, there's the, there's the, the ten-foot setbacks, but in addition to that, there's also twenty-five feet from whatever, uh, building may exist on your neighbor's lot. So you might be ten feet from their, you know, your side of the lot, but if they decide to build it really close, they're going to push you back a little bit further. So, that might be an issue, but I really don't think it's going to be. Um, I, I have no concerns about them operating on the side of the property.
Thanks. And we'll have, um, more Commissioner, uh, discussion after the, the public comment period, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Yeah. All right. Um, with that, uh, let's open the public comment period. Uh, is there any member of the public wishing to, to speak on this item? Uh, we'd love to hear from you. This is, uh, I think this is a great, great thing to consider.
I'll be really fast. My name is Natalie King. I was here at the first, at the first meeting where we had quite a good showing. I was actually very surprised that we had so much interest, um, coming with us. But I just wanted to also thank our support. Um, we were very excited to get two council members that were like, yeah, we'll help support this. I think the only thing that was continuously brought up was the predator thing. And we talked to a lot of people in the chicken community, and they said that very few, if any, actual, you know, bears were an issue. And so I feel like going through all of it, it's the, it's the burden of the owners. If you want your chickens to survive, then you have to protect them from the predators. But overwhelmingly, the people that had experience with chickens, even in rural areas where you would have more predators, they said even then it was super, super rare. The most common were the digging, the digging predators. And so you can do fences or whatever you need. But we are so excited, um, just knowing that there's so little negative effect in the neighborhoods. We're excited to actually try and having chickens. So, thank you, thank you. We are excited to go forward.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Latisha Holly. I am in very high excitement for this chicken ordinance to go through, and give us the opportunity to educate our children and be more sustainable as residents in Alaska, where you'd think that we would be sustainable, of all of the different states. You have downtown Portland where they have chickens and, you know, Kenai has it, so we should get on the, the bandwagon here. Um, very, very grateful to, um, Jordan and Daniel for sponsoring these, uh, this amendment. And I just know that, uh, here with Natalie, we've had a lot of support. We are very appreciative. To move this forward, please ask us any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to, to speak? All right, anybody online? All right, great. Dennis?
Yeah, I can't get into the system, so here I am.
Commissioner Murray, so nice to have you.
Uh, I could not get into diligent community.
Right, is, would you like to, um, I guess, well, yeah, here, uh, no other members of the public are, okay. All right, with that, the public comment period is, is now closed. Thank you so much to those who, um, who gave comment. And now we're going to move on to Commissioner comments or questions for staff. Dennis, did you have your hand raised to make a, a comment on, uh, for this resolution, or are you just letting us know that you're here? Put him on the spot. Online is hard. Can he, can you promote him to panelist? Oh, he's already, he's, okay, all right, sorry. I didn't need to put him on the spot. Any, um, Commissioner comments or questions for staff?
Um, I was curious, the current code that allows chickens, if you have more than an acre and a half, is it, does it have a maximum of six? Or is that going to cause a problem making it six across the board for everyone now?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Smith-Wickelley. So under the current code, there is no restriction. Once you have, in a residential zone, once you have a lot greater than 1.5 acres, it just says you can have all these animals. There's no restriction. The intent of this part is to not restrict it to six. The intent is just really to allow it across the board, um, as an accessory use. So the, I made this very explicit that this is an accessory use. If you read the general code right now, it could potentially be a principal, in a rural residential primarily, because we don't really have that many in the single-family, two-family. But no, no cap in the greater than 1.5 acres.
Oh, okay. I thought it said in all residential areas that it, there would be a maximum of six. In the new code, that's how I read it. That's why I was concerned.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we can clarify that, um, but the way it's written beforehand is if you're greater than 1.5, farm animals are allowed, period. Yeah. Correct.
Yeah, my only comment was that, um, six seems like a low number, and I would be open to allowing more from the get-go. But if you think that would, cause of, uh, ruffled feathers, then we can just leave it at six and then, yeah, thanks. I have a couple, I live, I do not live in town, but, um, one neighbor has twelve chickens, and then the other has six. And honestly, it doesn't really feel like that big of a, one has twenty-four, excuse me, is that what I said? And they're so small, they're just, um, so I wouldn't, I would, um, I wanted to amend it, uh, or, suggest increasing, but I don't, I don't need to. We can leave it at six, but, unless other Commissioners feel strongly that, I think the read on our community is that people are happy to have chickens in, um, in town and that, um, I don't, I think six is a low number. If you're going to have chickens and sell eggs at the farmer's market as a kid or something, like I would, I would want there to be more, but, any thoughts?
I think six is a good starting.
Six is a good starting point, yeah. It's fine by me. And I think it says that they, the coop or enclosure has to be big enough for as many chickens as you have, so. I, I don't know.
That's a, that's very discretionary.
That because it still feels kind of arbitrary.
Yeah.
Is that bear proof or not? I don't know.
Yeah.
I think six is also good.
To accept complaints if someone doesn't think it's big enough.
Yeah. Yep. Thanks, Tommy. Thanks, Commissioner Anderson. Um, yeah, um, Commissioner Anderson or Commissioner Murray, any, any comments or questions?
No further comment for me. Um, just on the six, I think that's a good starting point. And if it's not a big deal, then adding more is easy, but taking away is probably more difficult.
Uh, no comment from Commissioner Murray.
Thank you.
My only other comment is that, um, I'm very excited that this is happening. I, it's nice, um, that education is, is happening too. I think there's lots of misconceptions. I remember having a composting initiative a few years ago, and people were very concerned about bears, but actually it's more like the, the, the mar, the, you know, the ermine and that are, that are more destructive. And so just keeping that education, uh, wheel turning is, is very good. And it excites me because, chickens need food scraps, and then chickens poop, and their poop helps, uh, fertilize gardens. So it is, it's, it's a great way to add, um, a value, value-added, um, part of living in, living in town and being able to share all those resources. So, uh, I don't, I think we're ready to call for the vote.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Strasba?
Yes.
Mr. Smith-Wickelley?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Badla?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Yeah, and thank you. Um, I invite you to stay, but if you need to go, that's fine, too. Uh, moving on to resolution PZ 2025 dash zero one six, granting assigned variance to exceed maximum wall sign area within the commercial district at four two three six five Sterling Highway. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. I mean, we have the staff report?
All right. Thank you, Chair Badla and Commissioners and Member of the Public. These slides are very short, so, um, hopefully it's pretty straightforward. So this is sign variance to exceed the maximum sign area. When it comes to what is the limitation of size, it's based on the zoning district itself. So this property is at four two three six five Sterling Highway with, um, a corner lot off Fairway Circle as well. I don't have the zoning, but it's in the commercial district. So within the commercial district itself, um, wall signs are limited to eighty-one square feet each. And if you're a corner lot, you can have one sign per street frontage. So the variance request, is for the two signs, which is allowed by code for a corner lot, for each sign to exceed that eighty-one square feet. In this case, each sign is being proposed eight feet by sixteen for a total of a hundred and twenty-eight square feet each, to be installed on the north side, which is facing Sterling Highway, and then on the west side, facing Fairway Circle. And you can see the elevation to the top is along the north, and the elevation on the bottom is to the west. And with any sign variance, you can change the sign size, height and so forth. And that's what's being requested. And typically, when we see these, um, sign variances, our code is limited, if you actually really think about it, along highway frontage in these oversized building, they typically need kind of more of a proportionate signage, to make it more visible. So in this case, this is why they're asking for the enlargement of the wall signs. And then there are standards when it comes to signs typically. Typically, they're more of visibility, not distractions. And then, I'm looking for the other comments. You know, visibility is similar to what we see off the Sterling. If you know the little history of what you've approved in the past, we've seen Fred Myers with their additional signage. We've seen Tanner Seafood with the oversized signs. We've even seen sign variance for even own, city-owned property with the field house in the sports arena as well. And so, ultimately, you know, the sign code is a little bit limited in these single, or in the commercial district. 81 square feet is not a whole lot, mostly if your building is set back further as well. And so, staff finds that what they're asking is very similar to other proposal in that it's reasonable in size and scale. Maybe as a future code amendment is to standardize typically what I've seen is you get a certain square footage based on the linear feet of the building facade itself. So, it really expands depending on the size of the building. However, we just have a flat number of, you get 81 square feet. Doesn't matter how big or small your building is. And this is why this sign variance is being requested. And as you may see as you're driving by right now, they're under remodel. And so, this looks different than what it was previously. This is more of a modernized kind of flat metal and parapet. So, the building looks a lot taller, so the sign will be along that parapet. Other than that, staff is recommending your commission approve this. So, the sign variance itself is for each of the wall sign, because two wall signs are allowed by code to exceed the 81 square feet for each sign to be 128 square feet at the location 42365 Sterling Highway. Other than that, I'm available to answer any questions your commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. It says that they're allowed to, they're allowed two signs. Is that on the structure itself or is that also one by that, out by the road?
Thank you, Commissioner Strasba and through the Chair. They can have, for corner lot properties, they can have one sign per frontage, street frontage. So, they can have one sign off Sterling and one sign off Fairway Circle. Typical, if you're just a standard lot with one frontage, you'll only get one sign. You cannot have more than two.
But they can also still have a pole sign, correct? This is just the building signs that you can have one on each, on two faces?
Yes, it's only the wall signs where you can have more than one. And I would have to pull up code to make sure that can you have also a pole sign in conjunction? If you give me a minute, I can look that up and to double check.
And typically, it's, yeah, one sign on the facade on the street front. So, you can't have like two signs on one.
Correct.
On the highway, just because you have, so there's one on each street.
So, reading code in the commercial district and the sign code, you could have one freestanding sign in addition per premise and then still be allowed your one's wall sign unless you have a double frontage lot.
Any questions online, Commissioner Murray or? Anderson?
So, so they will have two signs, one front on Sterling and then one off to the side, is that correct?
Correct. So, on the building facade, they will have one on the north Sterling and one on the west facade off facing Fairway Circle.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Murray, I don't have any comment. I think if they were to request a freestanding sign, they would need to come back, wouldn't they, Linda?
No, under the current code, they could have a freestanding sign in addition to a wall sign. So, it doesn't say that you only can have a freestanding sign or a wall sign. They could come back as a administrative sign permit to come back with a freestanding sign in addition.
Thank you.
Smith-Wickelley, the Chair, I believe they already have a freestanding pole sign. So, they won't need to come back for anything, it's already there.
Correct, as long as they don't, as long as, I don't know if the freestanding pole sign is conforming to existing code. If it's non-conforming, they can just change the face of it, replacement. Otherwise, if they change anything, it has to be conformance with the current code in terms of height, sign area of the freestanding sign.
Okay. Yeah, I can't remember the year we, we looked at the sign code for, it took a year and it was five years ago, at least. Yeah. And I think some of the bigger concerns were, you know, bigger isn't always better when you're a person who's trying to find things. Bigger is always better when you're the person whose business it is that you're trying to promote. So, I think that's our job is trying to make things fair and, like you said, to scale. And so, it's not an arms race out there of just like more signs, all the signs and pole signs and wall signs and sandwich board signs and flailing signs. That makes it hard to navigate and can be dangerous for drivers. And this sign is a, is a backlit, but it's not, it's not a scrolling digital, neither one of them are. Okay.
It is a lighted sign, a cabinet sign they sort, but I'm not sure of the applicants here. Yes, so they can answer that question for you.
Yeah, well, yeah. Any other questions for, comments for staff? Have the applicant come up?
Yes, I'm curious about the sign itself, whether it's lit with lights coming on it or it's illuminated within.
I'll have to, I'll open up the public comment period and ask the applicant to come on up. The public comment period is now open if there's a member of the public who wishes to come speak and just make sure that green light's on and state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, so, my name is Mark Yoder representing North Star Metals. 42365 Sterling Highway is our company address, physical address. So, in regards to your question, it has lights shining onto the sign. So, it's not a lit sign, but it has light on the front one. The one facing Fairway will be unlit.
Okay.
In regards to the sign that's there already, it's, I don't know what size it is. It's a smaller sign. We may or may not remove that due to access to the, to the next lot that we also own. So, I don't know, will it stay or will it go? But if there's a choice either or, I definitely choose the building sign versus the small sign that's already there. So, if it's not an issue, we'll probably leave it for now. But if it is an issue, it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
So.
Would you stay for any questions in case there are any? No, okay. Thank you.
I do appreciate your consideration. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for being here. Yeah, I remember, I'm happy, I'm happy that you have chosen externally lit sign. I think they look really nice and the illuminated, I mean, it seems to be a trend in aesthetics, but the building looks also really nice, so good work there. I think, you know, that was something that the commission considered when we looked at, reviewed the sign code was in some way, how, how could we encourage more externally lit signs instead of the, especially the scrolling internally lit signs? Because those can cause, those are safety concerns. And then also, how do we encourage more wall signs instead of pole signs? Because that's also a clutter and driving hazard. So, maybe we can revisit the sign code again. Oh, boy. Anyways, sorry. But is there any other questions or comments for staff? Actually, excuse me, I apologize. We are beyond that. Is there any other members of the public who wish to, to comment?
Kathy Gensal, and I live on Fairway Circle. So, and I thought, oh, I'm going to have to come to this. I didn't really plan on speaking, but, and I also have a property off of Green Court. But number one, the, the remodel of the building is gorgeous. Thank you. But, but yeah, I mean, and I thought, well, I'll have to go see what kind of sign it's going to be. And I, I was like, I hope it's not a pole sign and it's not. So, so yeah, so I think it, I think it sounds great and it'll actually give me, when, when people are trying to find me, I'll say, well, we'll turn where it says that. And yeah, so that'll make it nice. But, but yeah, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. All right. I don't think there's anyone else wishing to speak. With that, the public comment period is now closed. Now, are there any other additional commissioner comments or questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I think we are ready to call for the vote.
Commissioner Burton?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith-Wickelley?
Yes.
Commissioner Strasba?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Badla?
Yes.
You, the motion passes.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Resolution PZ 2025-017, granting a conditional use permit for a deck replacement and expansion within the Kenai River overlay district at 309 Riverside Drive. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve? And you can just say, I move to approve.
I move to approve.
All right, thank you, thank you. May we have the staff report?
Yep, okay, yep, perfect. Thank you. Hopefully my clicker works. Yay. All right, so this is a conditional use permit, really as required for any development within that 100 foot from the ordinary high water, which we know as the Kenai River River Overlay District, K-Rod. And so, this is strictly requesting for a deck replacement, primarily on the upper deck. There is a lower deck and that is similar in square footage. And then really an expansion on the upper deck as well. And I'll go into detail. And this is at the property at 309 Riverside Drive. And the zoning of that is single family, two-family. So, there is already existing deck. Unfortunately, there's really no good photos of that itself. But what they're asking specifically, and I'm hoping to break it down and make sense of it, is to build a 968 square foot deck replacement and expansion. So, increasing by approximately 721 square feet. And you're thinking that's very substantial with the 512 square foot cover. And this is the image to the, to the top here, attached to the single family residence. Primarily, that 720 square foot expansion is along the north side. There's a very small footprint along the north of the property, which is their side yard. Perfect. And then further along the south side, which is the rear of the single family residence, they're wanting to construct a 795 square foot deck replacement and expansion to increase by approximately 176 square feet. And I do want to point out that that is really just the deck itself. It's excluding those two stairs that you see. And this is through the rear, the west of the single family facing the K-Rod. All the proposed deck replacement and expansion is occurring within 50 foot from the ordinary high water, between the 50 foot and the 100 foot. So, all within the K-Rod parameters. Then, as you can see in the lower image as well, you can kind of see where the grade is and how tall or how high it is from the grades, approximately seven feet for along the north side, which you see to your left and pretty much as well as what's under the existing house itself. The original proposal had more work within the 50 foot Habitat Protection District for the Kenai River Center, but they wanted to avoid that permitting, so they cut that part off. And this is why you see in your packet, there's portions of the renderings that says remove is because they didn't want to be subject to the Kenai River Center permitting. And then, again, when it comes to this permit, we look at what the zoning district is and what's the setback. And so, in the single family, two-family residential district, they're subject to the main building setbacks because they're attached to the house. In this case, the side yards are five and they're proposing five feet from the south and then a little bit over six feet to the north. And then from the rear, they're a little bit beyond that 50 foot habitation protection district at 51 feet. And then really, if you're measuring from the front, they far exceed that 20 foot front yard setback. So, in terms of setback for the deck and location of the zoning district, they meet all the standards. So, what's being proposed with the deck is they are proposing that they're on helical piles. Typically, you're starting to see more of this to see less impact to all the digging and excavation. While the applicant's application says that there's no disturbance or removal of existing vegetation, we all know that once we break into gound, we're, we're making some kind of disturbance and removing some. I do want to point out what you see right now on the image, the deck extension to your left, which is to the north. That area, if you go out there, it's already been cleared. It's a lawn area, has been used more like a front yard, grass area. There's really no trees in that area itself. And this is why staff is not so concerned about the disruption or disturbance of existing vegetation because it's already just purely grass in the existing deck itself. And of course, as with any K-Rod CUP, we want to standardize that, just that caveat of conditions that any disturbance will need to be revegetated and that's added as a condition itself. So, when it comes to the K-Rod CUP, we follow our CUP standards. In terms of the zoning district itself, again, they meet all the setbacks. It's a single family residence with an existing deck. They are expanding primarily to the north. It's almost like for like, expanding towards the river itself. And then the comprehensive plan calls it as urban residential. It's a denser area. You can see along this Kenai River frontage, other people have decks or even homes actually closer to than what the deck itself on this property is. And then in terms of the district, similar to the first, it meets the single family, two-family code of a single family allowing accessory use of it and a deck is accessory use. Is it arranged on a way to avoid significant noise, glare and odor? Staff doesn't find that it does produce significant noise, glare or odor. It does meet the setback, again, setback, side door setbacks for this area is five feet and it's an accessory. While the only thing that we see more is the expansion to the north is closer to the north property line. And it is elevated, so that potentially could be the only thing to be considering. But we didn't receive any public comments from the neighbors. And just to remind you, as with any K-Rod, we also have to send notices out to DEC and the Kenai River Center. And we only received a minor comment from DEC on this one. And then significantly impair the value of adjoining property. This is an improvement in terms of the property itself on a development. Staff doesn't see that there's significant impairment to the value of adjoining properties. In terms of scale, it is a little bit larger mostly along the north. But we also have seen other similar decks, if you go back there, a couple along further south on the Kenai River with oversized decks that were existent probably since the 90s or late 90s, actually in early 2000s. And then granting is not harmful to the public safety, health and welfare. Staff does not find that to be case. And of course, they are current on their payments of sales tax to the city and borough. So, those are the standards when it comes to CUP standards. Staff finds that they meet these standards and is recommending your commission adopt this resolution for them to construct the deck replacement and expansion with the following conditions, stabilizing and revegetating all disturbed areas or exposed earthwork by next year. Considering it's late in the season, they're probably going to try to start construction this year. And then, construction techniques and best management practice must be utilized to ensure that project activities do not result in runoffs and sedimentations to the Kenai River. And I felt to mention that in their plan itself, they talk about drainage plan. And so, that's something we don't really see and they're trying to control where the runoff is going. And then priority construction with this last condition is what DEC- And then priority construction with this last condition is what DEC is asking us to apply, is to locate the water and sewer service lines to avoid any damage by driven piles. Other than that, that concludes staff's presentation, and happy to answer any questions your commissioners have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Um, this does seem to, can you bring up the, um, one of the photos again? So they're, just for clarification, it's basically almost two 800 square foot deck additions. One to the left and one to the front, one to the north and one to the, toward the river.
The slide, break it down, kind of the increase.
Almost 1,000 square. Replacement and expansion, so increasing, so, yeah, maybe we can just like sit up here and look at those numbers for a second. Thank you.
Commissioner Burton, just for my clarity, since this is in the K-ROD, what are the light penetrating requirements for materials used, and does this meet the standards?
So when it comes to light penetration, it specifically speaks about walkways only. It doesn't talk about decks. That's kind of where our code is lacking. And then when it comes to light penetration, I helped to pull up the exact percentage. So I think we discussed this in the last K-Rod CUP off River Estates, that ultimately, when it comes to decks and building permit compliance, decks standards are determined by the manufacturer. They determine the spacing and so forth. So that kind of limits us on what we would like to see, to see the light penetration. Typically, based on that last one, I would have probably evaluated this differently. However, like I said, majority of the increase of the 721 square feet is along a grass area. There's generally no true vegetation or trees. It's all right on the property line. Otherwise, I probably would have taken a different approach on the recommendation for your commission to consider. But I will look up the exact percentage when it comes to this walkways. And that is on my radar to potentially change, and not limit it just to walkways to require light penetration.
I guess the increase from what they have currently is 721 plus 176. So, yeah. Who's good at math? About 900, almost 900 square foot addition, or increase from what they have. And I guess my, I just want to share a short, brief thinking on this. You know, it's sort of like signs, you know, everyone wants a big sign, everyone wants a big deck, and then, but then when you look at the cumulative impact of what it does to, basically along, when the River Center came in, they said, a roof and a deck, they're all kind of the same, even though there's slats in a deck. It doesn't really allow much water to go through, and so there isn't much groundwater absorbed. There isn't much recharge of that ground, and that affects, I mean, I'm not a hydrologist, but basically said that, that does significantly affect how the hydrology works along the river when it's just covered in non-permeable surfaces. So that's why we have the 100-foot setback. And it allows us to, to look at these things and, and say, you know, is this too much? Is this sort of in, in, does this fit with what other people are, are doing? And, you know, I think when we get, I think the, the good question to ask is if everyone did this, if everyone had a 2,000 square foot deck along the Kena River, is that going to significantly impair habitat? I don't think I can answer that question because I'm not a hydrologist, but I, I do think it might give the folks at the River Center pause. And that is why they would not allow this in the 50-foot, you know? And that's the reason why this person is not gonna do anything in the 50-foot, because this would not fly. They would have to do all light penetrating, and they wouldn't actually even be allowed to do it, because I think it can only be walkways. So I'm either inclined to let this one go through or to, to say, you know, maybe in the front closest to the river, those stairways need to be light penetrating, or that additional 176 square foot, uh, expansion. Which one is the one closest to the river? The 721 additional square feet or the 176?
Yes, the 176. So really, if you're looking at the bottom image, you'd be those two spheres. That's where the primary addition is occurring, is right when you walk the stairs heading to the left, is that area that's being increased, and the little platform to the stairs to the right, and a minor addition to the lower deck, just a little bit, to cumulatively be 176 square feet. So most of their addition, yeah, is away from the K-Rod, but still within the K-Rod.
Still within, yeah, yeah. And that, those stairs are existing, they won't be changed?
The stairs itself will be replaced as well. But, you know, it's usually is the deck, is this, the water's still gonna be able to go through, because it's the way it's tiered off, the stairs itself, so I don't really calculate into the square footage.
Those aren't part of the square footage?
Um, no, I made clear that it was excluded, but each stairs is about 68 square feet between one side, and there might be. So I can give you the square footage. So the stairs to the left side is 68 square feet. Stairs to the right is 56 square feet.
Yeah, if, if this were within the 50-foot, those stairs would need to be light penetrating. And a lot of people have those. They have stairs down to the river, and then there's a walkway. So if we wanted to, it's within our power to say, you know, within our 100-foot, we want, we want those stairs in that, the 176 plus the stairs to be light penetrating, metal decking. And we can do things like that, if we think it is in the best interest of the, the whole riverfront overlay district. Curious if this was all an addition instead of a deck, would there be, would it be allowable? I don't know how much square footage of the lot, the home is already taking up, just because it is almost like an addition with that roof on it.
Can you repeat that question?
I'm just wondering if this was an addition, if they weren't adding a deck, but they were just gonna make the footprint of their house this big. I mean. Yeah, don't we have a maximum allowable? Percentage of the lot? Percentage of the lot that can be built on? Just because if, if they could just build it all as a house, then it seems funny to be able to, to try to restrict them from making it a deck.
So we're talking about more of like the lot coverage?
Right.
People don't typically exceed that. Most lot coverage, and I'll confirm through code, is usually 30%, which they're nowhere close, if you're looking at the lot in its entirety. They're nowhere close to that 30%.
So if they were building an addition, it would already be covering that much of the?
Yeah. If they build the addition, I think there's probably more leeway to say, well, it'll come back to your commission as well in this area. You know, the question is, what do you, either you have a solid roof, just draining it down, and this will be higher roofing, or a deck. Do you see that as a equal in impact, as a deck less impactful?
It feels like a deck would be less impactful.
Yeah, so, um, I would just like to speak on the stairs itself, though. You know, the challenge, I think, with the code itself is while our walkway says it's elevated penetrating light, there is this existing deck on the lower deck. They are replacing that portion. So all of a sudden, you have this nice track deck, I don't know what material they're using. And now you have a metal grate. Usually, the metal grate continues consistently from platform to platform all the way down to the K-Rod. And that's just something we probably need to look at with the code change. I think I would have been more hesitant to, or more inclined to require elevated penetrating walkway if that lower deck didn't exist, because they already have something similar like that. And then, you know, the existing stairs, to then be required to be metal grate or whatever it is to be appropriate, it kind of distinguished like that material. At least letting you know how I would move forward with a recommendation to your commission. If that lower deck wasn't there, I would absolutely say, let's do elevated light penetration, because there's not that disconnectivity from the existing or existing material and transition to metal, to then a track stacking.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I was thinking, we can require all of that to be metal. You know, it's not nice on toes, for sure. But if somebody's asking for a thousand more square feet of, um, like, basically, surface that, that is now not permeable, that's a lot. But, um, yeah, the, uh, according to the River Center, a roof is the same as a deck, is the same as a driveway, is the same as, so I think, yeah, that's a good question of what percentage total. That's really the question. It's like, what percentage of all the land along the river do we want to be impermeable? Because that really affects how rainwater gets in or doesn't get in, how the river stays clean or doesn't stay clean. You know, the runoff from roofs and decks and driveways and all that is what adds to the pollution and, and prevents the recharge. And, you know, that's as far, that's as much as I know. But they would, they would not allow this in the 50-foot. But I think we've, we've done things like this before. I don't know that they've been as big. Yeah, I'm just trying to.
Commissioner Strasbauer here.
Can we ask them to have slots between each step?
No.
You know, leave no back on the step, and let it, allow them to use their own product? That'll let some light in and some drainage in?
We, yeah. I guess I can say as the chair, like, we, we tried before, but the building requirement is that for the, for that material, that it has to be closed, so the people don't like trip and stub their toe. So, um, yeah, the, and yeah, that was a, something that came up before. I know.
Yeah, and, you know, realistically, if you're concerned with the substantial increase, you know, just has some options for your commission, has, you know, they are proposing a roof. You know, is that roof worse than without a roof? You can eliminate that. Or you can say, hey, the substantial increase to the north should be reduced, you know? Primarily, the only, just to kind of give you a sense of the existing, so a similar stairwell stairs exist to the right. The stairs to the left is gonna be new, because the only access to the lower deck was coming from the south side or to the right here. And so that's really the new proposal. That lower deck in itself is in existence, and because they had to remove it to get us beyond the 50-foot. So it's very similar footprint, the lower deck itself, just with the exception of that new stairs to the right, or to the left here.
But it's 176-foot feet bigger than the old one.
Yeah, because that second portion to the top, the upper level, to the, to the left of the stairs is all new. And they did, they are pushing that upper deck to the south side, or to the west side, towards what, towards us, is expanding by a little bit in width as well. And that's where the substantial amount of additional square footage is coming from, when it, when we're looking at what's closest to the river itself.
I don't really see that the roof is gonna, would make it any worse than really just the deck. And I think it being on poles will provide still decent drainage. It's, you know, it's not a foundation. I mean, it's looking like what I think I'm seeing, like it slopes down. Yeah, are there any other comments right now for staff, or questions for staff right now? We do have the applicants online, and I'd love for them to be able to comment. All right, why don't we move to public comment and open it up? And if there's anyone wishing to speak, please, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand if you'd like to comment. And you can do star nine if you're on your phone.
Andy?
Yeah, hi, I'm actually the project manager for this job. And thank you for your time. This has been quite a process for us. Over the last month, it's actually kind of been going on since April, and then we held off on it per the client's request. And anyhow, I guess I'll kind of, I have a few statements and questions to make here. So as for the existing deck, and obviously I couldn't see any of the photos that you guys have, if you have any of the existing deck. The decking that he has on there currently actually lets, it's, has 0% transparency. It's a tongue-in-groove decking that hasn't allowed any light through it, obviously, you know. Through, I don't, I don't know the angles of the sun, but I believe decking of, or light, rather, does get in under there, depending on the time of day currently. So we actually do quarter-inch spacing between every single one of our deck boards. So I can't do the quick math on that, but we're obviously adding more transparency, transparency to the ground on the river side of this property, I believe the west side. Um, so there's that. And also, I'm not sure, I'm looking at the Asbilt that I've got in front of me and with our new deck proposal here. He does have, um, he does have decking that's a deck underneath there that I can't see it on the Asbilt. And I'm, like I said, I'm not sure if you guys have photos of it. But we're totally removing that section, which appears to be a couple hundred feet at least, based off the pictures that I have of his site when I met with him. Um, so we're totally removing that, which obviously will let, will let more light in. And then for that deck, we did, we had a bit of an issue with the 50-foot easement from the ordinary high watermark. And just the way it was measured, which I tried talking to, I believe it was BASS from the city, and we still, I'm not sure, have gotten that cleared up, whether it's measured to the slope, whether it's measured to the slope from the OHW, or if it's shot up with a laser and measured with a transit. But regardless, uh, like we said, we're trying to make this thing happen, and we're, we were obviously willing to eliminate that portion of the deck, just to make it kind of a smoother process for all parties. And we will be tying that lower deck on the west side into, it is the steel grates that are 75% minimum transparency. Um, as for the comment, I think we were just talking about it for maybe trying to eliminate toe kicks to let more light through on the stairs. Uh, just unfortunately with the code, we're not able to do that. Uh, we have to have toe kicks just per code for, you know, our rise and run. There's not too much we can do there. Like I said, for, for our decking, we do have quarter-inch gaps between them, which right now, there's, there's no gaps. And, uh, um, for water runoff, it'll still, obviously, you know, if it rains on the deck, the water does have to ultimately go somewhere, so it will go down to the ground. Um, maybe not 100% of it, some of it'll be absorbed by sunlight or whatnot that sticks on the deck. I got a few other things in here. Um, and there also is, there's existing stairs. I'm not sure, I know we went over a lot there. There is an existing stair set on the right side of that west-facing deck, so I guess the south side of that west-facing deck. There's an existing set of stairs that actually go out further, and it has all sorts of landings in it. So ultimately, I guess, and I'd like to hear your guys' thought on this. My understanding of it is with the lower deck that we're eliminating, we're kind of gaining, I know, the, getting some light through, and, um, as minimal vegetation disturbance as possible is kind of what we're all going for on this, being right on the river. Um, I think with, and this is just for the west side. I think with, and this is just for the west side. I don't think we're taking up any more ground as far as, I think we're ultimately letting more sunlight through. Because we are eliminating that one deck, though ours is going to be a bit bigger. We also, up until he redid his walkway down to the river recently, he did have that same tongue and groove style decking on, which was in our initial proposal, those, it was kind of the stairs down to that other little deck pad there that was tying in. That one that we eliminated off of there. He does have that currently on his, or did have that for years on his property and he opened that up to steel grate. So like I said, I think ultimately we are on the west facing side, allowing more sunlight to get in there. Obviously water getting back into the ground and whatnot. As for, I believe it's the north side where the roof is, or that deck is going to be with the roof on it. Obviously we are taking up, we're adding pretty significant amount of square footage there. Again, I'm not sure if you have photos of it, but that is where our deck's going to be going. I'd say about 75% of it is going to be just over his, he has a flat lawn on that side of his house. And that's what our deck is going to be going over. And so for vegetation and stuff, I don't think, I guess what I'm saying is I don't think the impact will be too substantial. But again, I, I am not totally sure. And for the roof as well, we will have, I believe our plan is to attach, as it's a single slope roof, we're going to attach gutters on the whole north facing side of that roof. The backside and have it draining, I guess, if you guys have an opinion on it, just to, just to one side. To allow the water to run off in a clean manner and not, not be hammering the ground all at once. So I guess if you guys have any feedback, that's just kind of where I'm at on it. As far as it seems like the transparency has been a big topic. And I think that we're obviously, oh, like I said, we want to do the, we'd like to get this project going, I guess. We've been working on it for some time and I think the transparency thing, we're open to whatever you guys might have to say. And I think we're, we're trying really hard to, I guess, to, to let as, make this thing as transparent as we possibly can. So yeah, thank you for the time and if you have any feedback, I'd love to hear it.
Thank you so much for being here and taking the time. Does anyone have any questions? For the, for Andy? I just had a question. So you said he does have a light penetrating walkway that he put up, the, the owner put up a while ago to replace a wooden walkway. Does that walkway go up to the, to where the new lower deck would be?
Uh, yeah. Can you guys still hear me? Am I still on here? Yeah. Yeah. So he had, like, I'm not sure if you have his Asbilt, but it shows on there wood stairs. You can kind of see there's two landings and two stair sets. That was all that would before that it was tongue and groove that wasn't letting, it was a composite material, but tongue and groove that wasn't allowing any light through. That's been replaced with steel grates all the way up to that, all the way out of, I guess, up to the 50 foot ordinary high watermark line. And so our deck that's at the bottom that we kind of made an adjustment to and cut it, cut some square footage off, that is his, his stairs will be tying into that, I believe, whether we have to install, you know, a little, some sort of landing to tie it all together with, with the steel grates. If we have to do that, we will. But yeah, those come all the way up to that, or all the way up out of that 50 foot ordinary high water easement. And that is, obviously we plan on connecting those to the existing structure. And so basically that takes care of the 50 foot. And I'm not a hundred percent sure about the code. I believe if you are in that 50 foot ordinary high watermark easement, it does have to be 75% light transparency. And I think that kind of takes care of that issue if, if that were to be one.
Yeah. Yeah. And we're, we're in the same sort of boat, you know, because there's such a, a big extension happening to the north and it, it looks beautiful. You know, I'd like this on my house too. I think the, the goal is to, yeah, within that next 50 feet closest to the river that, that we're, you know, hoping to do right by. We'd like as much of, of that coverage to be light penetrating as well. And so I'm not sure if the, the owner or you as a project manager see any possibility of portions of that lower deck or the stairs leading up to the main deck to be light penetrating. That would be, that would be better for the, the river. But yeah, it's also, you know.
Yeah. I guess, obviously, I guess I wasn't the hundred foot, the hundred foot K rod zoning easement or I guess I wasn't, is, is there a code for that? That is there a kind of transparency code for that as well? Or is it just the 50 foot ordinary high water easement?
Yeah, that's a good question. So the, the borough has the 50 foot and they have a lot of the the codes and they require the light penetration in the hundred, the, that next 50 feet, which is what we're talking about. And what Saldatna does is we don't have specific light penetrating requirements. So yeah, this isn't something that you would have to do by per our code. It's just something that would be good to try to do as much of as possible for the, for the habitat. But and it's also a conditional permit. So you know, it's, it's up to this body to say yes or no, whether we think it, it, it'll work.
Yeah. Well, um, yeah, I guess we're, like I said, we're open, we're trying our very best to leave as small as a environmental impact as possible. As far as the footings that we're going to use. Obviously there is still a disruption when you're screwing a pile down into the ground. I think it's a much, much less of a disrupt, uh, disruption versus pounding three inch piles 20 feet into the earth. I think that, that shakes and moves and disturbs a lot under there. So yeah, we're, if you guys, I guess if any, any of you guys have, I guess the, the, one of the tough things with mixing the steel grates with the decorators brand decking that we're planning on using, which is also a hundred percent mineral composite decking. Which I guess is, I'm sure it's better, better for the environment than treks with lumber and, and plastic and all that. The problem is just making it, trying to frame it structurally to have everything kind of plane out to where there's no tripping hazards. Obviously the steel grates are different with, I guess, in height from the decking we use. And so it's kind of weighing the options for me right now is, you know, if we have to kind of frame things separately at different heights to get it to plane out as one, to where there's no tripping hazards for guests or just whoever's recreating on the deck. Does that, you know, would we have, would we have to install more piles in the ground or, or I guess that's kind of my biggest, the, the one thing I can think of right now is kind of the framing of it. And if it would, obviously it could let more light through, but it would, would it be more of a disturbance to the ground that's there? So that's just where I'm at on it. And like I said, we're, we are very open to ideas or requests that could help, uh, help us. So.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would, I would very much love to see that lower deck be light penetrating and, you know, tie the stairs in or something, but that's me personally. And, you know, if, if this were in the, with, within the 50 foot, the, the borough would definitely require that. So but yeah, I, I, I get it. Those, those pilings that screw in are, are amazing. That's very cool, new technology and the mineral composite decking is awesome too. Yeah, I, I trust that you're doing what you can for the project and owners desires to do the best job you can. I think we're just trying to figure out if there's a way that we can have a little bit more light penetration and also that groundwater recharge is kind of the whole goal with them. And so there, yeah, I'm not sure if that's a possibility, but that would be, that would be, I think, good for the, the habitat there longer. Any other comments or questions for the applicant or for the project manager from commissioners?
Commissioner Anderson here. Hey Caitlin, just to make sure I know what everybody's talking about. The main concern is the light penetrating on the lower deck, which is approximately 320 square feet. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. So the other side, the elevated seven feet above the ground. Nobody at this time has, has really talked about that or been too concerned because we're so high off the ground, light's going to get there. It's the stuff that's just off like the ground, like a couple of feet.
Yeah, I think, I think that I was just trying to be reasonable. You know, it's, it's a lot of additional decking. Almost a thousand square feet of additional coverage. So, you know, we've got an increase of 720 square feet over on that, the new north side and then that 800, about 800 square foot replacement is, you know, it replaces a lot of existing. So there's only an additional 176 square feet down there in that lower deck. And I was just thinking, because it was closer to the river, because it's lower and because it ties into an existing metal walkway that if possible, if that lower deck and the stairs could be metal grate, and then the rest of it could be nice, beautiful mineral composite decking. If that was something that the owner would be willing to do, that would be better for the habitat. But you know, that's
I understand. Okay. I just want to make sure I was totally clear on, on what the current discussion was on that portion. Thank you.
I don't know. I'm not sure if that's something we have to require or we can just.
That is up to your commission to require that lower deck to be light penetration. You just have to justify the reason. I mean, in terms of the K rod standards, you know, not the CUP standards, when it comes to general standards for anything that's adding on and goes to a public hearing, general standards is, should be constructed wood, plastic, fiberglass, aluminum, steel or non-toxic material. The second standard is all disturb area or earthwork. It's just to be stabilized and revegetated. And lastly, walkways installed should be 25, not less than 25% light penetration. The rest, you know, as long as you justify your reason for requiring a certain light penetration of a portion of a structure. It, it is within your purview as this is a CUP and it's discretionary. You just have to justify your, the rationale why you're adding that condition.
No, I think, yeah, just because it's such an, a large, a large additional coverage of almost a, the 960 square feet of, or sorry, it's the 900 ish square feet of additional coverage of, of new deck total is why I would, I was wanting there to be part of it to at least be light penetrating. So if, yeah, so the, the borough requires 75% light penetrating. If we only require 25% light penetrating, I don't know what kind of material that is. Maybe it's like different metal. But that's, that's significantly less. So there's maybe some, some workarounds. I would, yeah, I would, I would love to encourage the, the, the owner and the project manager to consider that on the lower deck and the, and the stairs. To be, to be good river stewards. But I'm not sure how the rest of the commission feels about that, or if you want to talk about it at all. Cause that's either something that we can encourage or it's something that we can require since it is in the hundred square feet, square foot of the Kene River overlay district that we manage. Have jurisdiction over.
Smithwick Ailey here. What, Linda, do you know what, what product is 25% light penetrating?
Unfortunately, I do not know when it comes to decking.
It might be the thickness of the metal. Sorry.
Yeah. So I think it has to probably more than likely not your standard deck with kind of a timber like wood like pressure treated stuff. Because as you know, with the last one, it had to be almost like three quarters of an inch to even provide close to 25%. So I they will have to get creative in terms of what that deck material would be to provide at least a minimum 25%. You know, and you don't have to go 25. You can say a little bit less. Again, the 25% is specifically talking about walkways. So there is flexibility there as well. If we know from the last experience that the 25 requires such a great spacing. I don't know. That would be up to you. And maybe the project manager has an idea of what other alternatives there are to provide at least a 25% light penetration for a, a lower deck. But just to, yeah, reiterate, yes, it's within your commission's purview because I can see the rationale that the lower deck is not as high off the grade as the upper deck to provide that light penetration to then require a certain light penetration through the lower deck.
I was thinking that it could maybe just be that metal, metal, metal grate. And you know, it wouldn't be as, as beautiful, but maybe it would be beautiful because you could see the, the flowers underneath. I don't know. I'm sure it's more about walking safely and, and having comfort and, but if, you know, you're going to transition anyways onto a metal walkway to get down to the river, maybe it wouldn't be so bad to have that lower deck, that landing platform be also made of that same material.
Andy, go ahead, Andy.
Hey, sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to, um, kind of, if there's a way for us to use that mineral composite decking and allow 25, and I'll have to check with our building codes to see how big of a gap we can possibly do between that decking. Obviously we can go greater than a quarter inch if we, if we wish to. It's just kind of finding the maximum that we can do. It won't affect our, our framing at all. Obviously our joy spacing would stay the same. I'm just curious, I guess, how, how your commission would feel if we were able to let 25% of light through while still maintaining that mineral composite decking. I guess just how you guys would feel on that rather than the steel, the steel grates if possible.
I would feel happy that you're, you're trying to meet us somewhere in the middle, you know, and if that's, I, I think that's what we ran into before the, the building code was like, ah, you can't do any more than a quarter of an inch per building code. And so we're like, oh man, that didn't really get us anything. But if you are able to meet code and provide as much spacing as possible, I think that's a really good faith move in the direction of, of having, you know, more light penetration and a little bit more water penetration too. So I would be happy if you were willing to do that. And maybe the condition that I'd like to put on is just to have a conversation with the River Center to ask them a, a little question about whether it's better to have a rain barrel off that roof or whether to just no gutter, like in terms of absorption of, of water. I, I can't remember. I think they had, they had some, some science on it that, that was the best practice. But it was actually not what I thought was the best practice. So it was an education for me. So if you would be willing to have a conversation with the River Center, even though you are not within the 50 foot, but just to say, hey, this is what I'm doing. Is there anything I can do to make this project like a little bit better for the, for the habitat? I, I would be. I, I would be, that's the condition I would like to put on this instead of any additional conditions for you, if you're willing to do the phone call and the, and the, um, spacing on that deck as much as you can. That would, that would make me very happy.
Okay, yeah, I can, uh, I'm definitely open to that. I'm sure, you know, they've dealt with this before and probably have better ideas and know, know more about water drainage and all, all that stuff, uh, than I do. So, yeah, we, uh, like you said, we're not, uh, we, we're not trying to step on any toes or we just obviously want to give our client, uh, what, what he wishes and kind of what we're, I guess as much as we're able to do without kind of with, with the smallest, uh, environmental impact as, as possible for his property. So, yeah, we're, like I said, we're, we're open to any requests, um, where we can meet halfway or, or get a little leeway here and, 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 uh, kind of do more per your request on other things, so.
Well, thank you. Yeah, um, I'd like to, uh, with that, I'd like to, I guess, make a motion to, add a condition, um, to make the, the decking, um, spacing as wide as the, uh, project manager can and to have the project manager call the river center and ask if there's anything else that they can do, um, to mitigate the impact to the, um, riparian habitat.
My second.
Thanks. Any discussion? Anything we can vote on that amendment?
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Strasba?
Yes.
Commissioner Smithwick Ailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Burton?
Yes.
Commissioner Vada?
Yes.
Amendment passing.
Thank you. And now can we call for a vote on the main motion unless there's anybody else who has any comments or questions?
For the vote. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Burton?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smithwick Ailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Strasba?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Vada?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, thank you so much, um, Andy, for, for being here and for answering questions. And really appreciate your willingness to, um, uh, work with us and, and talk with us tonight. Moving on to informational items, um, notification of commissioner resignations. Commissioner Gary Turner and Jenny Smithwick Ailey have submitted their resignations from the Planning and zoning commission. We're very sad. Uh, effective date for Commissioner Turner's resignation was immediate, um, earlier in August. And Commissioner Smithwick Ailey is effective tomorrow, September 4th, uh, 2025. We would, um, like to thank them for their service to this commission and wish them well on their future endeavors. And, uh, it's your job to recruit and arm twist and find folks who are as wonderful and community-minded as you to, to help serve. So thank you so much for.
Thank you.
All the brain power. And also Keydine Peninsula Housing Virtual Roundtables, there's a flyer on the upcoming Keydine Peninsula Housing Virtual Roundtable, affordability, availability, industry data, trends, and community impact. There are two opportunities to attend the session on September 4th and 5th at 10:00 AM. This is an opportunity to share perspectives and contribute to a collective understanding of the change, the challenges surrounding housing on the Keydine Peninsula. So I think we've dealt with, um, many, many, um, issues in this commission. And, uh, so I encourage you to attend one of those if you can. Um, that's, um, here. Let's see, where is that? Sorry. Thanks. Virtual. It is anywhere you want to be. Moving on to, um, mayor and, and council reports, Vice Mayor Parker, would you?
Thank, thank you, Chair Vada. Last week, we, the city council had a workshop on the riverfront ordinance and, uh, got an update from staff on all the work that had been spent the last two years on this project. And we will have our public hearing next week on, on this. So we'll see where, where it goes from there. And I want to thank Commissioner Alley and Commissioner Turner for serving on the planning commission. I know Commissioner Alley's been on the planning commission for a long time. So thank you for all you've done for the planning commission and the community. So that's the end of the report from city council.
Thank you so much. Um, city manager Bauer, would you like to?
I know. Sorry. Hey, good evening. Um, I don't need to tell you guys this, but it was a very busy summer. So, um, not only, um, in the community, um, as we all know how the traffic was and getting from one end of town to the other, but also for the city and in regards to bringing the fieldhouse online. Fieldhouse is officially opened, um, today is the third home, yesterday. And as of, I think it was 12:30 when I got there to go walking, there were 42 seniors that had signed up, so to speak. They have them in the system, um, to walk during the times that they can walk. So it was pretty exciting to see all the people there. Lots of pickleball going on. Super big thanks to the community for the support for the boat, um, you know, back when. And also for, um, Parks and Rec who have been working tirelessly since being built to get it open. And it's a huge success. So thank you to everyone involved. Another project that's, you know, some smaller scale, big impact as well. The city put in a water line to the Little League fields and to, uh, to serve the Little League fields and the rodeo grounds. And there's been a well there with a pump house that's been troublesome. I'll just say that. So this water line will allow both entities to hook into to service what they need to. So it's great, um, for both entities and the wa- their water needs there. So we're excited to have completed that water line. This time of year is when we start internally focusing on legislative priorities that will ultimately go to the council for approval. And also at the same time, we watch the federal and state, state not so much right now, but the federal appropriations for last year's, and this one happens to be two years, request. And one of the requests is Marydale, the reconstruction of Marydale. Our, it's called congressionally designated spending. Our request was $3.9 million for that project. It had been previously put in the bill to fund it and then a change in administration. So no CDS requests were funded nationwide. This year it was all put back in and has now been both the House and the Senate to be funded. On the House side, Congressman Nick Baggis III, um, has put in a million, has a million dollar request in for the project. And on the Senate side, Senator McCowsky, $2.3 million. And we're really excited, um, to have it on both sides and really thank our federal delegation for their support for this project. With our legislative priorities, we focus, primary focus is regional, the regional impact. And we, as we all know, this street has very much regional impact. So at some point, those priorities will come, like I said, before the council and then be distributed to our state and federal delegation. I did want to, I was hoping the vice mayor would do it, but I didn't want to comment on, um, the Alaska Municipal League. And if you don't know, Vice Mayor Parker's also the president of that. But, um, the Alaska Municipal League, um, Summer Conference that we had up in New Kiavik. And it was, um, a really interesting time. It's, I would say it's unlike any other summer conference that I've been to. And it was very impactful for me, at least, um, for the others that were there as well. Probably a more casual style, a lot more roundtable, a lot more discussion, which I think is really good amongst, um, the communities to talk about the effects of, um, funding and the effects on the community, while also talking about housing, a lot of other things. We were able to just really talk about and how we can work together to, you know, solve the issues and collaborate on the issues. And I think what I, my takeaway was the power of collaboration, especially up in the North Slope Borough. The, how they collaborate together, the cities, the tribal, the tribes, and then the borough itself, pretty impressive. So, you know, it got me thinking, how can we all collaborate to make things happen? And I think really the city and our community does a great job, as evidenced by our projects that are moving forward. So thank you. That's what I have. Unless you have any questions?
I, I would love, um, I don't know, is there any way that, um, the borough and those, um, villages collaborated on housing that you thought we could learn from?
You know, a lot of their housing is done really through tribal initiatives. And so that, um, probably that's probably the biggest impact of how they make things happen. They also have, they have powers that our borough does not. They've taken on all powers. They are a home rule municipality, home rule borough, which I'm not sure, I think, two in the state, two up, three? I mean, there's not very many of them. And they've taken on powers that the state normally ta- does. So they've taken on these powers. She's much more first in that. Um, and, uh, they've taken on the powers that the state would. So they have a lot of power to do things that other municipalities, municipalities can't. But they do work together with the tribes to make things happen.
Thanks. Right. Director Mitchell? Thank you so much, city manager Bauer.
I, I will keep it short. Um, first, thank you, Commissioner Smithwick Ailey and Commissioner Turner. I'll have to reach out. Um, just appreciate the time that I got to work with you and sad to see you leave. Sure, maybe if I can convince you to come back if I can't find someone. Yeah, I, I appreciate the, the feedback and the questions. So thank you. It's been a pleasure, even though it's been a short time. As kind of mentioned before, my time kind of going offline a little bit will be around the corner. So, um, next week will be my last week physically in the office and I'll be working remotely. Until baby comes and then I'll take a month off, but then I'll still be working part-time. And of course, if meetings need to be held, I will remote in during my time away because there's just a few things, particularly Platts, that has a timeframe that, you know, we have 49 days to approve or make a decision. So those things can't wait. And I'm not going to put Beth, uh, enter any more pressure. She did a great job tonight running the meeting alone by herself. So thank you for that. And then, you know, I, since my time here, there's been a few priorities for your commission and I will continue to work on that, um, over the winter with really highlighting the K-Rod code amendment. I know I talked about the ADU, but every day I feel like when I'm looking at it, I discover something new. So I don't feel comfortable bringing forth something, um, that I feel like there could be a more comprehensive way to bring forth and really thinking of how to best approach that code ordinance itself. What else do I have for your commission? And something that I didn't share with you, and maybe I did, is this summer we started a, uh, A-frame sign lending program for the, the Wednesday market, for those that, um, the city has been taking upon ourselves to put out A-frame signs for businesses along the Sterling. I came up with that idea to, rather than put the burden on staff, let's ask for a partnership with businesses to take ownership of that, where we lend the A-frame signs. That's why you probably saw the signs are, get it, got new facelift. It's a QR code that takes you to Google Go map that we can always change if parking areas, um, change. And so that we can keep it modernized. And we were really successful in getting, I would say, 80% of businesses to take ownership of keeping the A-frame sign and putting it out every Wednesday. And that really alleviated a lot of Parks and Rec's time, in addition to all the other signings that they put out this year. So definitely looking for room for improvement for next year, but I would say I appreciate the business, participating business, taking part in that. It was really helpful. Um, other than that, I, if you have any questions, happy to answer any that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Moving on to commissioner comments, um, Commissioner Burton, kick us off.
Sure. Like to thank Commissioner Smithwick Ailey and Turner, who is no longer here. It's been nice working with you guys and sad to see you guys go. And, uh, really just to wish you the best as you are going to bring someone new into this world. So, uh, thank you.
Commissioner Strasba?
I think it was a very productive meeting, so thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Smithwick Ailey?
Yeah, I have definitely enjoyed my time and I've learned a lot. It's been almost 11 years and I'm not going anywhere. Other than, I mean, I'm not leaving the community, so I'll still be around and I have enjoyed working with all of you.
Do you have any takeaways? Commissioner Murray?
I'd just like to add my, uh, congratulations, if you will, uh, to Commissioner Alley for her service and, uh, also to Commissioner Turner and, uh, wish you well. And, uh, I'm sure that, uh, Linda, Linda will take you up if we don't find a replacement that matches your ability.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, thanks to Commissioner Gary Turner for his service and, uh, Commissioner Jenny Smithwick Ailey. It's been a pleasure serving with you. It's been my entire time here. So it's going on, I think, five or six years. I don't know. Feels like a long time, but, um, always a pleasure, uh, having you in there and you're going to be missed. And I'm glad that you're at least going to be in the community. I do like the pizza at your restaurant. So thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll be missed greatly. Um, I think both you and Commissioner Turner added a lot of good brain power and thoughtfulness and experience as, you know, from, in the community. And it's going to be really missed. Uh, you've done everything from, um, looking at like pathways behind coladas to, to, um, those businesses. And, um, yeah, bikeable, walkable streets to sign code, to, um, the downtown improvements. And, and I think, you know, we had hoped that we would be able to, to make some more changes, I think, sooner. But, you know, change always takes longer than you want it to. But I think, you know, the, the intentions that we put into that is, um, still in the works. So I'm grateful to your, for your work on that. And, um, yes, very sad to see you go. The only other comment I wanted to say was to, um, some humble learnings, uh, last meeting. I, I was sick and I'm so grateful that you took my, took the helm and, and ran the gavel. I, I had a really hard time. It was a split decision on that cabin, the cabins. And I think in hindsight, um, I just wanted to share that I, I didn't think fast enough. But a few things that we all have in our back pocket is, um, we can call for an at ease. If we're not ready to, to vote, um, we can also ask, um, for, um, uh, if at that, um, I, I just wasn't really ready to, wasn't ready to, to, to vote. But the voting had started. And so, um, I think at that time, I also could have asked right after that vote, where I, I took a, took a hot minute to decide, I, I could have said, you know what? I really needed more discussion, um, because I did. And I was, um, it's, it's small potatoes, but I did this. This was good learning for me and I wanted to share it. And, uh, I could have also asked after that vote that I was like, you know what? I really don't think I want, um, to, I could have moved to reconsider at that time. It's too late now. Um, we've already signed the, um, conditional use and, and so it's, it's off of our plates. But, um, if we hadn't signed the conditional use permit, um, I could have even brought it up or any of us could have brought up something, um, again, and, and moved to amend, um, something that we had already previously adopted. So there's lots of, lots of things that we can do within Robert's rules. And the best thing of all is that some cities don't use Robert's rules. And the best thing of all is that some cities don't use Robert's rules. So maybe someday that will be us. But there's lots of ways to skin the cat and run a meeting and I'm just grateful to do it with you all and thanks for everybody's time. And our next meeting will be October 1st here, unless we do not need to have a meeting. It will be short if we do need to have a meeting. So that'll be here, October 1st, Wednesday at 5:30. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Jenny.